Good evening. Let me call to order the Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023 Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Organization meeting. Good to see everybody here, and I'm sure there's some people out there on YouTube land or cable TV land. So as I called the meeting to order, I also recognize that we customarily have a moment of silence. And we will have a moment of silence this evening, and I would ask that you consider some thoughts for the -- thoughts and prayers for the family who was in the fire victim of the fire that occurred on Sunday morning early in Newtown Township. So let us have a moment of silence together. Thank you very much. We join our board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to our first round of public comment. Before we start, let me announce that an executive session was held last Wednesday, the 28th, for purposes of discussing personnel. Also, let me mention that with the public comment this evening, we have 42 -- I counted 45, actually, plus or minus 45 issues that the board will be voting on this evening. So it would be kind of cumbersome to maintain order and have public comment about each one of those. So we will entertain public comment now and once at the end of the -- end of the meeting for what's on the agenda. Is there any public comment for our first round? Okay, seeing none. We'll go right on to the organization of the Board of Supervisors. And we'll open with a motion to elect a chairman. And do I see?
I make that motion?
What is the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who would you move to be the chair?
I make that motion for Dennis Fisher to continue as chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion to elect Dennis Fisher as chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, motion to elect a vice chairman. Do I see -- I see -- I recognize Ms. Snyder for the vice chairman.
I make the motion to elect John Mack as vice chairman.
And I will second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to elect John Mack as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, thirdly, the motion to elect Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer.
I make the motion to elect Ellen Snyder for that position.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mack, and I will make a second. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion to elect Ellen Snyder as Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. At this point in the agenda, I see a spot for chairman's comments. I will try to keep them brief. Just want to list a few accomplishments of 2022 and some challenges looking ahead to 2023, if I can get my water open. In 2022, whether you agree with some of these accomplishments or not, there were a few things. Some of the decisions were controversial, so whether you agreed with them or not, they were decisions that were made. One is Wawa's land development, and two is a settlement agreement with Tool Brothers for the archdiocese of Philadelphia property that surrounds us on a couple of sides. We filled two police officer vacancies and added a new police officer position. We filled the finance director's position. We began a search for a new deputy fire chief, and we saw complete full years of our new assistant manager and new park and rec director. They actually started in 2021, but it was a full year in 2022, so I gave you credit for that. We improved the public viewing options for Board of Supervisors meetings by adding a YouTube channel. We achieved an agreement with Newtown Borough for a fire services agreement to fund the Newtown Emergency Services Department. We achieved an agreement with Wrightstown Township for police services. We approved a labor agreement with our firefighters' union. So we were doing a lot of approving and agreeing. We designated ARPA funds and ordered a dump truck for Public Works, three police patrol vehicles, and park and rec improvements. We also purchased three additional patrol vehicles for the police per the 2022 budget and a vehicle for the fire chief. We were awarded grants, a Keystone Communities grant for improving pedestrian safety on Sycamore Street, and a multimodal grant for making trail connections to roads in the Business Commons and elsewhere. We paved approximately 3.5 miles of road. We arrived at a budget in early December, and those are just a few of the comments. I could have added a couple more of the achievements. I did -- I have learned a lot being in this chair, and especially about the difficulties just contemplating maintaining order in this meeting. So some challenges -- some challenges ahead include continuing with Wawa, designating additional ARPA funds, monitoring what will, I'm sure, be a tight 2023 budget, and finishing our comprehensive plan and getting that approved, and working through some of the contemplation of having a pedestrian bridge between the Borough and the township. I'd like to thank the administration and consultants for resourcing us expeditiously throughout the year. We have questions and we get answers, so thank you for that. I'd like to thank the board for being -- always being available to work on the challenges we had in front of us. I'd like to thank the public for your participation and advice, even when we were expressing disagreement. We look forward, and I hope all of us look forward, to a productive 2023. So I wondered if any of the other board members had comments they'd like to make? Okay, all right, we'll jump into it. Appointments. And the first set of appointments are reporting directly to the Board of Supervisors to serve the township with compensation for 2023. First off, I need a motion recognizing Micah Lewis's employment agreement as township manager.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion recognizing Micah Lewis's employment agreement as township manager, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is a motion appointing Michael Lewis as township treasurer and secretary.
I make that motion?
I will second that one as well. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next motion is the motion to appoint Kilkeny Law and Jerry Shankman Esquire as township Do we have a motion for that?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the appointment of Kilkeny Law and Jerry Shankman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. Next motion is to appoint Mary Roseman as Board of Supervisors Recording Secretary.
I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Say aye if you agree with appointing Mary Roseman as Board of Supervisors Recording Secretary. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is individuals serving with compensation. Individuals serving with compensation, and that has to do with the zoning hearing board. I would entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Josephine Vlasteras, Paul Cohen, Tim Pontero, and Matthew McCullough, and the appointment of William Wall. Do I need to read the years? Okay, so I would entertain a motion for that.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five, zero. Next category is reporting to the township manager to serve with compensation for 2023. First off is traffic engineers. It's a motion to appoint Remington and Vernick Engineers as Township Traffic Engineers with appropriate authority to attend board, commission, and committee meetings.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I will second it. We have a motion and a second. Do we -- any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion to appoint Remington Vernick as Traffic Engineer, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. Next, civil engineers. Motion to appoint Remington Vernick Engineers as Township Civil Engineer, General Environmental Engineer, and Lighting Consultant with the appropriate authority to attend board, commission, and committee meetings.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro. Do I have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Remington Vernick as Township Civil Engineers and General Engineers, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is geographic information system, GIS engineers. Motion to appoint Remington Vernick Engineers as Township Engineers for GIS services.
So move.
And I will second that. Do we have any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. On the motion to appoint Remington Vernick as Township Engineers for GIS, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Let me turn the page. Next is labor solicitors. I have a motion -- I entertain a motion to appoint the law firm of Curtin &amp; Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys.
So move.
A motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of appointing Curtin &amp; Hefner as Township Labor Attorneys, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is building inspectors. Motion to -- entertain a motion to appoint Barry Isit and Associates as Township Building Inspectors. In fact, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Barry Isit as Township Building Inspector, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is pension attorney. Motion to appoint Mock and Hopt. Actually, okay, yes. Motion actuary. Thank you. Motion to appoint Mock and Hopt Benefits Group as Township Actuaries.
So move.
We have a motion. We have a second. I will second it. A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion to appoint Mock and Hopt Benefits as Township Actuary, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. See if I can get this one right. Entertain a motion for pension investment advisor. The motion is to appoint the firm of DeHab Associates as Township Pension Investment Advisor.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of DeHab Associates as Township Pension Investment Advisor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Motion -- okay, next motion is insurance brokers and carriers. This is quite a long list, so I'll go through them and we'll just go right to the vote. Motion to affirm HA Thompson, The Hartford Standard Insurance, Delaware Valley Workers' Compensation Trust, Delaware Valley Insurance Trust, and Delaware Valley Health Insurance Trust as brokers or carriers of township insurance and employee benefits.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. A motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? I'll call the question on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next, we have township planners. Entertain a motion to appoint CKS Engineers as Township Planners.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. On appointing CKS Engineers as Township Planners, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Official depositories. And this is quite a list as well, so I'll read the motion and we'll go right to the vote. Motion to designate First National Bank of Newtown, TD Bank, Invest of Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust as Township Depositories. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Four, one. Next, Earn Income Tax Collector, Local Services Tax Collector, and Tax Hearing Officer. Motion to appoint Keystone Collection Groups as EIT LST Distribution Tax Collectors and Tax Hearing Officer.
So move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of Keystone Collection Group for EIT LST and Tax Hearing Officer, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five, zero. Next is auditor. Motion to appoint the firm of Mailey LLP as the independent auditor to audit the accounts of Newtown Township for fiscal 2022.
Is this 2023? Or 2023? 2012, yeah.
It would -- they're a year behind in doing the audit, so they would be doing 2022.
That was for last year, huh?
Yeah.
We're on 2024, next year, what does it cover last year? All right, I'll still make a motion.
And you'll still -- and I'll make the second on that. Any further discussion? I know that's a tricky one. I changed it and changed it back. No other -- seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. Those in favor of appointing Mailey as independent auditor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. Video production. Motion to appoint Video Gold for 2023. I'll entertain that motion. You have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of Video Gold for 2023 for video production services, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Five, zero. Emergency Management Coordinator. Entertain a motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Emergency Management Coordinator.
I make that motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for Glenn Forsyth as Emergency Management Coordinator. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Fire code official. Motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Fire Code Official.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. On the motion to appoint Glenn Forsyth as Fire Code Official, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Going to take a water break. Thank you. All right, going on to boards and commissions. And individuals serving without compensation. First is, and this is several items to vote on here. First is Nesheminy and Little Nesheminy Creek and Delaware River South Plan Advisory Committee. Entertain a motion to appoint Micah Lewis as the Township Representative. I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion other than what it is and when they meet? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor of Micah as the Township Representative, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next is vacancy board, appointed yearly. Motion to appoint Mary Donaldson to a term ending December 31st, 2023.
Make that motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
No problem. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of appointing Mary Donaldson as vacancy board -- to the vacancy board, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Planning Commission. Motion to -- I'll entertain a motion. This is, again, quite a list of individuals. Motion to affirm the appointment of Peggy Driscoll, and this is to affirm the appointment of Peggy Driscoll, Craig Deutsch, Warren Dallas, and Terry Christensen, and to appoint John DiApril, Alex Treese, Shelley Howland, Joel Robb, and Mary Donaldson.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of that slate of folks for planning commission, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the Park and Recreation Board. I entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Rachel Chavetz, Jan Filios, and to appoint Cam Magazzi, Dana Barber, Ricky Martin, Kelly Stormer, Kristi Hardy, and Catherine Ann Porter.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of affirming and appointing that list of individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the Newtown Area Joint Historic Commission. I'd entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Anna Marie Kaminski, William Mahler, and to appoint Craig Deutsch.
So move. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of those individuals of the affirmation and the reappointment and the appointment of those individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the Harb, the Architectural Historical Architectural Review Board. I'd entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Joseph McCarron, William Mahler, Mary Donaldson, and to appoint Harriet Beckett, Barry Isit and Associates as Building Inspector, and Peggy Driscoll as Planning Commission Liaison, which is a voting member. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of affirming and appointing those individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the Newtown Joint Municipal Sewer Authority Board. Entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Linda Bobrin and Ellen Snyder, and the appointment of Jerry Shankman.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of those appointing -- affirming and appointing those individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Next is the Environmental Advisory Council. I'd entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Elaine McCarron, Jan Filios, Mark Haber, and to appoint Peter Gillies and Amy Easterly.
I make that motion?
I will second that motion. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of affirming and appointing those individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. The next on my list is Technology and Communications Committee. We only have two people who are interested in reappointment. What the board would like to do will be keep that committee open, and this is going to be likewise on one or two other committees. Keeping that committee open for letters of interest, and once we get a number of folks who could maintain a quorum for that, achieve a quorum for that meeting, we will then take action. So there are five spots left on the Technology and Communication Committee, if I count it right. So we'll go right on to -- since there's no action on that one, we'll go right on to Building Code of Appeals. Now, we did get, and this is for the board, we did get one extra letter of interest to be reappointed, and that was from Bradley Longowski, who was already on that committee. So I don't know what the board's pleasure is that this is the only one that this happened. His letter of intent came over the weekend, so I don't know if we want to -- this is a committee of three, and we have two people that have been on this committee. The motion I entertain pending the board's pleasure, a motion I entertain would be to affirm the appointment of Craig Deutsch and to appoint Bradley Longowski.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board on that? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of affirming and appointing those two individuals to the Building Code Board of Appeals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Next is the Tax Collection Committee. Tax Collection and Man Next is the tax, tax collection committee, tax collection and management committee. It's a motion to appoint John Mack as tax collector, tax collection committee delegate, and Michael Lewis as alternate. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. For the appointment of John Mack as tax, tax collection committee delegate and Michael Lewis, Micah Lewis as alternate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Give me one second. Next on my list is the finance committee. It had no interest from the public, so again, we'll keep that, that committee, that commission open. If there are interested individuals out there being on a finance committee, we would need to have a, that is a seven, seven person committee, and we would need at least four people to make that viable, so that could achieve a quorum. Okay, so we're going to move on to veterans committee. In this case, we had two other individuals who were on the committee before, asked, asked for reappointment, and their, their appointments came in over the, over the weekend, too. And they are, well, let me just read the motion now as I have it. I'd entertain a motion to appoint John DiApril, Ed Valenti, Ethel Hibbs, Anthony Nwore, and Kevin Osborne. Anthony and Kevin, they sent their letters of interest in late.
Make the motion.
Have a motion, and I'll make, I'll second that motion. Have any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of appointing those individuals as names, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the human relations commission, human relations commission. I'd entertain a motion to affirm the appointment of Nicole Adams and Angelique Acevedo, and to appoint Kevin Antoine.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? This is a four-member board, as I remember, or is it a five-member board? But we have three. So all those in favor of the affirmation and appointment of those individuals, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Economic development committee. Again, we have a committee that, we received three, three responses, we need five for a quorum, so we have actually six vacancies, I believe, if I counted right. So we're going to hold that open until we get enough members to achieve a quorum. So that's the economic development committee. All right, that brings us to ordinances and resolutions. The first ordinance, first ordinance or resolution is to set the bond amounts for township officers, and it's resolution 2023 R1 to set bond amounts for township officers for 2023. Treasurer Michael Lewis, $3 million.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Have any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of setting this bond amount are 2023, resolution 2023 R1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is resolution adopting Act 153 exemptions. And resolution, that would be resolution 2023 R2 certifying properties that qualify for tax increase exemptions under PA Act 153.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of adopting 20, resolution 2023 R2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is resolution reaffirming the administrative conditional use procedure. That is resolution 2023 R3 reaffirming resolution 2007 R10 establishing an administrative conditional use procedure. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of adopting resolution 2023 R3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is reaffirm, reaffirming resolution 2011 R7 establishing township's pension plan. The motion is to reaffirm 2011 R7 establishing township's resolution plan investment policy. Have a motion, and I will second that. Do we have any discussion from the board? All those in favor of reaffirming resolution 2011 R7, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is resolution 2023 R4, adoption of a fee schedule. The motion is to adopt resolution 2023 R4, adopting the 2023 fee schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? All, all those in favor of adopting resolution 2023 R4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting dates. The motion is to set meeting dates for Board of Supervisors for 2023.
So move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion of a second. Any discussion from the board?
Just one, one quick mention. We are still meeting the second and fourth Wednesdays, except for December. I know that would, that threw everybody for a loop last year, just wanted, and December will be the first and third. It's just so the public knows, I just.
We have 11 months notice, but that's, it bears repeating.
Everybody's been warned.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, bless you. Seeing none, I'll call the question on the 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting dates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is the procedure directing the presentation of proclamations. I'd entertain a motion authorizing the chairman after pulling the board to have the chairman sign and the manager attest to proclamations honoring citizens and others for worthy deeds and activities. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this procedure directing the presentation of proclamations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is tax ordinances and resolutions. Motion to continue all 2022 tax ordinances and resolutions in force pursuant to section four of the Local Tax Enabling Act of 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I'll second it. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of continuing all 2022 tax ordinances and resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Next is IRS mileage reimbursement for 2023. The motion is to approve the 2023 IRS mileage reimbursement.
So move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. On, all those in favor of approving the 2023 IRS mileage reimbursement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Okay, just one more page. This section is for standing non-statutory committees authorized by the administrative code. The first one is the pension plan committee, which is appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Michael Lewis and to affirm the appointments of Joseph Martindale, the CWA firefighter representative, and Chris Bush, PBA representative, and John Elman, CWA non-uniformed employees representative for 2023. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing those individuals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Lastly, in this category, occupational safety committee, appointed yearly. The motion is to appoint Michael Lewis, Glenn Forsyth, and to appoint the PBA appointment of Chris Bush, and the CWA appointments of Joseph Martindale and Michael Jones.
Make that motion?
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the appointments of those individuals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Mr. Lewis, I don't believe there's, under this next category, there's any vote that needs to take place, is, is board appointments.
That's, that's correct.
I will read them, but we won't take action. This is for liaison and coordination assignments of the board. The Bucks County Association of Township Officials is Mr. Mack. The Bucks County Community College Liaison is Kyle Davis. The community service organizations is Kyle Davis. Council Rock School Board is Ellen Snyder. Council Rock Senior Center is John Mack. Homeowners Associations is John Mack. The Historic Architecture Review Board, otherwise known as Harb, it's easier to say, Dennis Fisher. Joint Zoning Council is all of us. The Newtown Ambulance Squad is John Mack. The Newtown Borough Council is Dennis Fisher. The Newtown Fire Association is Dennis Fisher and Ellen Snyder. Newtown Joint Historical Commission is Kyle Davis. Joint Municipal Sewer Authority is all of us. Park and Recreation Board is Kyle Davis. Planning Commission is Philip Calabro. County Tax Board is John Mack. Environmental Advisory Council is Ellen Snyder, and Veterans Committee is Kyle Davis. Seeing, as I'm, I am to page 12, and I'm done, it has signatures, so. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Is there any? Please introduce yourself.
John DiApril, Newtown Grant, still the biggest and the best. You started out with, you know, accomplishments, and yeah, I mean, you said that, you know, not everybody agrees with him and stuff like that, but I mean, to have at the top of your list Wawa, when it's still under litigation, it's going to cost us a lot of money. We got the two, three lawsuits out there, plus an appeal. So it's going to cost us a lot of money. You know, even if you win, you shoot that Wawa, you, you appeal to maybe less than half of the, the constituents, half the residents of Newtown. What's going to stop Royal Farms from coming in or Sheetz coming in? So, I mean, you know, it's inevitable, one of these days, maybe not the same location, probably, probably real soon, but, you know, they're going to come. They're going to come. And right after that, you had Toll Brothers. Yeah, Toll Brothers gave you the bribe, you took the bait, you let the crybabies on the road on the side where they wanted to go first, you let them do, they were going to fix the road a little bit, wouldn't cost us taxpayers' money, get Toll to pay for it. But they bribed you, they gave you the land and all that stuff. You listened to the crybabies in the Lancy Place. They didn't want the cars to come out by municipal drive over here. You know, I mean, what they get, they move in a development, one way in, one way out, you know, million-dollar houses, you know. I came up, I pleaded with you, almost cried, not let the cars go through Newtown Grant, which they will, but you didn't do that. Bribe took place, it took precedent over that, I guess. Going down to appointments, you know, you gave the Kilkenny Law Firm the appointment again. I mean, after they, they screwed up, you won the battle three times, the Board of Supervisors won the battle three times, and Arcadia, whatever they call themselves now, building those over million-dollar houses over there. I mean, that was their fault, and you still, you still, you give, you give them another job. You know, anyplace else where there wasn't favoritism and all that stuff, you know, they would have been fired. I mean, if you look, you look at the other townships where they do, he's trying to get in the other townships, a lot like Begley, Carlin, and Mandino is doing. I mean, they're the best. They're the best. Nobody's better than them in this area. But, you know, I guess to the wrong flavor, you don't want them. You'd rather hire and try, God's trying to make, make his bones over here, you know, the, you know, that law firm, after they screwed up, you know. Then you go down to zoning, zoning, the attorneys that you have for zoning, even the zoning board, they made some bad decisions. Costing the township money, you know, and the last thing I have here, complaint, is, you know, you also use TD Bank. You know, it's not a United States Bank. Personally, they're terrible bank. I mean, they couldn't get my name straight on the checking account. I know so hard about that, but, you know. Yeah, and nothing to complain. I want to congratulate Dennis for, you know, his being appointed chair again. Dennis, I mean, you're a nice guy, a lot of nice guys, but we'll want to see them in your position, but you know, I, I know you have Newtown close to your heart, even though I don't agree with everything you do up there, so can't say that about any of the other appointments on the board up there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hello again, everyone. Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident, like John DiApril. Been there since 1999, for the record. I know you guys know, like me and John, because we talk a lot when you guys have the meetings. Keep it brief and quick. I hope you guys had a good Christmas and New Years, and for the coming year, the only thing that I ask and hope is that you guys do a little bit more due diligence on stuff that arises or stuff that comes out in the public that we find out later than you guys hear about it, since you guys are in the power to hear it before we do, or whatever, like the new development that, or I should say, building, the housing building that could come next to the Wawa if the Wawa does get through and get built, that it could be built there, whatever. A lot of people don't want stuff like that built on the bypass, so I hope that, you know, we could start doing stuff in the future that could prevent some of these things from arising and getting to this point, possibly changing zoning laws if that needs to be done, talking to the joint commission board to make sure that they're not putting all the burden or problem on us, and that we're not the ones that have to deal with the brunt of, oh, Wawa's going to you guys because we don't want it, so we're going to push it on you because it's got to go somewhere, or all this housing development, we're going to push it on you because you guys are bigger and we are small, we don't have the space, or whatever. So I just hope that, you know, you guys could do that, or whatever, and by doing that, it shows the community and the citizens that you guys really stand for us, and that you're benefiting us and fighting for us, and not just bending over and saying, oh, we're just going to give it to you because it's cheaper for the township, or it's better for the us because we don't have to go through all this hassle, litigation, all the paperwork, or whatever needs to be addressed. So a lot of people have their, you know, disrespect sometimes on how certain things are handled, and it's not just on Facebook, but it's on articles that are written on the patch, or on the newspaper, that they put comments, I can't believe this happened, I don't understand why this went down, or whatever. Understand, people can't be here, like me and John, you know, that have a Understand people can't be here, like me and John, you know, that have a lot more free time, they have kids and families or whatever, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of some of them, because some of us don't like some of the things that transpire, and sometimes we feel that it's not always in the best interest of the citizens, that it's always like, what's easier, what seems to be the right thing to do, and it always doesn't feel like that you're standing up for us. So we just hope that in the future this year, that you stand up a little bit more for us and try to fight these people when they try to do stuff that even though John might say, oh, a lot of people don't want it, if you really asked them and did a survey or polled them, a lot of them would say no, we would rather not have it than have it. So thank you, and I hope we have a good 23.
Thank you. Any other? Any other comments from the board members? I did forget to thank all of our volunteers and, and committee members and the volunteers that, that make our township go, especially like the Planning Commission, and we have some very active committees. EAC's been very active, so I just want to thank all those, all those folks for all their hours. Seeing no other business, I'd like to wish, again, wish everyone a happy and healthy 2023. We are adjourned.